I'm just coming for the county commissioners' regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the 18th, 2025. It is 9:00 AM. I'm going to call the committee to work. Please rise for an invocation by Commissioner Tony Haas, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Lucero.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Today we commit our families into your hands and we ask that you guide and protect them. Let our bond grow and strengthen as the years move on. Heal them of any pain or sickness. Please grant them their hearts, desires, and never let them depart from your body. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, our commissioners. Roll call, Mr. Dornikam.
Commissioner Serp.
Yes.
Commissioner Haas?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Dornikam?
We should ask the board to remove items 9D and 9E.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, commissioners? Here and now. I will entertain in motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with 9D and 9E removed from the agenda.
Second motion. Commissioner Haas?
Yes.
Commissioner Serp?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. We don't have any items on section two. We're going to go to section three. A bit of correspondence, commissioner, committee reports. Commissioner Haas, would you like to go first?
Sure.
February 5th, CCI had two meetings. One discussing the modular housing bill and amendments and the amendments that are sought. One question and the other bill was the construction defect bill. One question that was asked of the first bill is have they talked to the insurance companies since the last meeting? Apparently, the insurance companies would be amenable with the maximum standard moving forward. The debate ensued then among the commissioners. How would that help keep housing affordable? They argued that eliminating local control wasn't going to benefit anyone and liked that regional approach wasn't going to work. Then they discussed the construction defect bill and that was Boss Nicker and 23 other co-signers to that bill. And that bill was designed to help. These two bills contradict each other. The first bill asked for a maximum standard. This bill asked for a minimum standard so that condos would be more affordable to build. And one of the comments that the governor made at a past press interview was that condos have all slipped due to the rigorous burden of proof of quality. And if it's good for one, it should be good for the other. On February 6th, the Environmental Impact Assistance Fund Committee met, which I'm a board member of, and met to discuss 64 applications that will be introduced on March 5th and 6th in Eads. Have our next funding round. February 7th, CCI Legislative Steering Committee briefing met. They had 46 bills that were discussed and they'll be up for discussion further Thursday and Friday of this week. CCI will take positions at that time. February 8th and 9th, kind of the highlight of the week. Colorado Farm Bureau had the young farmers and ranchers from all over the state come in, come into Los Angeles County and do tours and visit our establishments downtown. These young men and women are professionals. Many of them are attorneys already and moving forward with their lives. They met at the space to create and they met there for educational purposes, which Colorado Farm Bureau provided with legislative updates and also gave them an opportunity to network amongst each other. My wife and I had the honor of participating as the keynote speakers. They also did a small lecture at the Yoder's Farm. The Yoder's goats were about a week from all whatever they do kidding. And so there were a lot of little fat goats running around. They really enjoyed that. The Yoder's are very hospitable and I just wanted to say thanks to the Yoder Farm. February 11th, Senator Hickenlooper had a Zoom discussing the future of the Space Command and other Colorado concerns and issues around water budget and ag and the ag bill in particular. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Serp.
My report is basically similar to Commissioner Haas and Commissioner Lopez because we've all attended, listened in on these steering committee meetings. The main one that I'm focused on right now that would affect our county is the regional planning because it will affect not only our building department as well as the city's building department. I'm not sure where that's going to go. They've got a lot of amendments to do on that one. So we'll be listening in on these steering committee meetings on Thursday and Friday of this week. I think they're going to present a few new deals on there. On Thursday, I'll be attending the Veterans Roundtable over at the Mark Carmel facility. I'm not sure if it's all there or not, but that's pretty much my report at this time.
Thank you. Want to kind of highlight a little bit more of those two bills for any contractors in the audience. One of the things that the state is pushing for highest common denominator and a lowest common denominator. The argument that they keep getting from rural Colorado is that if you have someone building a property, a house on the eastern part of the state where the snow load is perhaps not amenable to, I mean, not equal to one of the mountains or vice versa, that that homeowner is going to be incurring additional costs. And so part of the recommendation, these are going to be regional building codes, which makes it pretty tough to accommodate. You know, there are going to be, I don't know how many counties per region. So imagine where, you know, Las Anmas, Baca, Prowers, and all of us being in one region. Well, we'll go with the maximum and minimum denominator. And in that, there is also the modular fabrication of homes, which is now the next level of. And we keep hearing affordable housing. That's no longer the case where even some of the modular builds are over $200 square foot. I mean, that's expensive, not to say all the engineering costs to do all the other stuff. So by the time you're done with it, you know, some of the homeowners will be paying $250 plus. So let's see that the legislature will be open to hearing the recommendations from the state. If we're going to be putting this responsibility on counties and then counties don't have any say so, what happens? And that's what Commissioner Tony Haas was referring. Where are the insurance companies? And now they're at the table saying, well, if you build a house that perhaps through the regional building code and was put on at 10,000 feet of altitude and there is any damages, the insurance has to understand that there are going to be some challenges, meeting all that. So but that's one of the governor's bills. That's one of his priorities to create affordable housing throughout the state. And so we know that with the makeup of the house in the Senate, that bill is going to pass. There's going to be a lot of amendments that are going to be introduced and let's see what type of labor they bring back to the table. The Colorado Counties Inc., CCI, will entertain all the conversation. And just so you know, right now, the legislature, when you look at 2025, slightly over a month, they've already introduced over 400 bills. 400 bills. And now more than ever, you're seeing the party lines. And quite frankly, there are, as our state representative, Mr. Winter, says, have an update, the good, the bad, and the ugly. There are some really ugly ones here that are knocking on the door of the Second Amendment. I encourage any and all constituents to go and testify because this is a huge impact. Send a bill three specifically. Send a bill 25-003. That is one that is knocking on the door of the Second Amendment and that's one of the ugly ones that could possibly erode the rights of individuals to, you know, as the Second Amendment guarantee. The right to bear arms shall not be infringed upon. And so that is exactly what that means. The, I had an opportunity on the 11th, as we mentioned, when Senator Hickenlooper met with the entire CCI, the 64 counties, one of the, of course, the recommendation is to send a letter on behalf of all 64 counties. Don't move Space Command. It's over in Colorado Springs. It's working. Let's not create another additional expense. Alabama wants it. Perhaps there were promises made on an election trail, but we don't know that. So I think right now it's going to be a thing of games. I mean, a number of games. How much is it going to cost to move it versus? A lot of the engineers that were moved from all over the United States to Colorado Springs would have to not go back. Some of these young families have already purchased homes in the area. They're working there and so we'll see what happens. But the recommendation is to send a letter on behalf of all the counties to the White House. Colorado supports the state Colorado Space Command. So the, one of the very interesting meetings I attended was with Healthcare Policy and Finance, HIPAAF, on the 13th. Colorado Hospital Transparency. The, this was put on by HIPAAF. And one of the, one of the reports that was actually shared with us, why the cost of hospitalization is so expensive. They shared with us some slides and I'm sure if you go to HCPF State of Colorado, these are the number of uninsured, just then for alone, uninsured visits that took place in 2024, over 17,000 visits, basically not paying them back to the hospitals. So when you look at the increase of cost on hospitalization and why some of the hospitals are financially struggling. The emergency department visits from uninsured patients were up by 69% from even pre-COVID baseline. The pre-pandemic uninsured rates ranged from 6.6% to 7% and now it's 69%. So just to kind of give us a flavor that throughout. And then, of course, they attached some of these figures to the migration that Colorado has seen in the last, in the last few days. Another meeting that was very quite interesting was the Rural Leaders Cooperative on Aging Populations on the 13th. I don't know, I didn't know this, but Colorado, by and large, we are an aging state. Now, the metroplex has a lot of the younger. But when you look at, there is a map here, when you look at the map of Las Anmas County, working on counties, our average is about 50, 55, somewhere around there. Some of us are already there. And so what that means is the services from both the healthcare system as well as other services, accessibility to other services. And that, that particular meeting was very, very interesting. The, another conversation that we had with the Southeast Colorado Region 19, of which I'm a board member of the OPUS Settlement Funds. The, I think, I'm beginning to get a little bit concerned because we keep putting money on problems and the result is, I mean, we're moving the needle just slightly. Our region is nine counties. We're doing really great. In fact, we live up within the state when it comes to awarding RFPs and putting the services. But right now, one of the things that rose up so high to the level of conversation was mental health. Mental health. I did notice that one in three or one in four Coloradans are going through some really tough challenges when it comes to mental health. That figure was provided to us and so I did a little more research. And if that is the case, I look around here and I could be the one in the group, right? You never know. So understanding what's happening, what's going on. These are really some, some challenges that we're facing specifically in rural Colorado or what we call frontier counties, which could happen to be one. And let me close with this. When Commissioner Tony Haas and Commissioner Lucero talk about Colorado Counties Inc., I want to give you an idea of what, of the 400 bills that are being introduced thus far, how Colorado Counties CCI entertains those bills. Agriculture, Wildlife, and Rural Affairs. Right now, we don't have anything. General Government, 16 bills. Health and Human Services, 15 bills. These are directly impacting counties, one way or another. Justice and Public Safety, so far, seven bills. Land Use and Natural Resources, five. Public Lands, thus far, we don't have any. But Tax and Finance, four bills. Tourism, Resorts and Economic Development, one bill. And Transportation and Telecommunications, six bills. So when we come together as a body, which will happen this Thursday and Friday, there'll be a big debate. We'll have the sponsors of the legislation and all counties are at the table. And on it, we'll begin to debate the pro con of each one of these bills that are going to be directly related. They have a nexus to counties. And from that perspective, we'll take a position. Support, oppose, amend, or simply for a lot of the counties, they tend to abstain from supporting or anything else. And so that, that document, we send that document to our lobbyists, which we retain at CCI. And the lobbyists go on and work directly with the bill sponsors. And what they do is 64 counties here said 65% is what we need to acquire. So you might be a no vote, but at the end of the day, if 65% of the counties said, yes, we oppose this bill, then that's exactly the position that CCI takes. And then the other, one of the really interesting perspectives is we want that bill to be amended. Well, what would you like the amendments to be? So we send that information to our bill proponents through the CCI legislative staff. It's an incredible process. I really, we enjoy it because we have access to. And then from there, the doors open to, if you really support a piece of legislation, to go testify for it as commissioners. And I'm also extending that to any constituent out there. If your position is to oppose, you have the same thing. The, as I mentioned, you sent a bill three last Thursday into the wee hours of Friday morning. You went on because this is once again, one of those bills that is going to be infringing upon the Second Amendment from my perspective, my opinion only. But the, our website, I believe we have access to the CCI table, bill table that we have in there. And you will see at the end of the day, how many of those pieces of legislation would be impacting every and all counties. And I tell you one thing, we, and I'm going a little bit longer because I want everyone to understand as the legislation, the legislative session continues to go on. We still have February, the rest of February, March, April, and part of May. So if at the rate of 400 bills per month, we're going to have a lot of information coming our way. And so one makes sense, but the very, very basic line is that when you go to the General Assembly, Colorado General Assembly, you'll be able to actually go in there, Senate or House. And if there's any live sessions, you can actually see it. But if you want to provide testimony, you go into a committee, general, the legislative session, go to a committee, then you actually go in there, sign up, and give your comments. And at the end of the day, as citizens, I think it's all of us, the responsibility of all of us to see what's happening at the state level. But quite honestly, this is one thing that is incredibly exciting and informational because anything that happens in Denver will be impacting us here, you know? And a case with housing, it's, if we're going to be looking to the standards of the metroplex, somebody living up in the mountains may not be needed to do that kind of thing. So pardon my lengthy report, but I think it's impressive because right now the legislative session is getting that, that close into it. And also, as your Colorado representative at the National Association of Counties, I sit on the executive board of NACO National Association of Counties in that we're going to be having the national conference. And in there as well, we will ask to give a report of what's happening in Colorado, what's ailing Colorado, what is going well in Colorado, what is? And so that will be my opportunity to be there. And these roundtables happen at the nation's capital, which is interesting because from the perspective of providing information and bringing information back, it gives us that aperture to understand what's happening from one state to the next. And at the end of the day, I think all of us are pretty much dealing with the same thing. So commissioners, pardon my lengthy report. That's going to be my report. I'm going to go now to elected officials update. Do we have anyone from the assessor's office? Anyone from the clerk and recorder's office? Treasurer's office? I got a message from Sheriff Navaretta. He doesn't have any reports to give. Anyone from the district attorney's office? Anyone from the coroner? Here and now. Now I'm going to go to the next section. Mr. Dornikam, do we have anyone sign national public comment?
No one signs, sir.
Thank you. Let me invite anyone that is attending online. If you would like to address this Board of County Commissioners, this would be the opportunity to do so. You will have three minutes. All you need to do is raise your hand and/or unmute yourself. Anyone online? Here and now, we're going to move to, we don't have any items on a public hearing. I'm finished business. We're going to go right into new business. 9A, consideration of 25 F-001, new additional fairgrounds, park pavilion, RFQ slash P. Mr. Dornikam?
Commissioner, before you for your consideration is RFQ slash P 25 F-001 for the construction of a new pavilion slash gazebo at the fairgrounds in the southeast corner of Park with the following results. Trinac Construction Group, 123,087, EGD, 179,450, AEM, 328,326, Ark Valley, 458,854, Maha, 317,187, Paragon, 272,114, 64 cents, RAA, option A, 321,275,7 cents, and option B, 373,158,7 cents. The low bid is Trinac Construction Group, 123,087. It's my opinion, commissioners, that their bid is not compliant with our RFQ slash P. We requested that one, I am determining the utility room be outside of the footprint of the pavilion. And I believe the specification of documents that were part of that package or RFQ slash P solicitation clarified that we're met on site. And I believe it was made clear there also, all the other contractors who submitted bids have that utility room outside of the footprint of the gazebo slash pavilion. So in my opinion, Trinac Construction Group's bid is non-compliant. Therefore, the next cheapest, lack of better way of describing it, bid is EGD, 179,450. We have budgeted 270,000 for this. I'd ask the board to approve EGD's bid. But the caveat is we will be seeking grant monies to help pay for this. And this was made clear within the bid documents or within the RT documents that once we got a guaranteed maximum price, we would then solicit grant monies to help pay for it.
The, thank you, Mr. Dornikam. But when, and that was going to be one of the questions. When the blueprints and the date specifications were published, was clearly indicated that the utility room would be outside of the scope of the footprint?
Commissioner, if you look, yes. But if you look on page 15 of your packet, clearly indicated that the utility room would be outside of the footprint and also indicated that during our site visit, that we want it, we want the new pavilion to reflect as near as possible what the old pavilion is. This board, the board can always waive that requirement. But if the board does waive that, then I recommend that we re-bid it so that all contractors are bidding with the utility room inside of the footprint of the pavilion. It's been my experience when you re-bid, anything, it tends to increase the price.
The other question I have for finance director, are these going to be any of the lottery funds?
No, this is not. This is actually, like you said, the EIAF from Colorado.
Pending approval.
Pending approval.
Yeah, commissioners, I think it's later on in today's, on today's agenda. We'll be discussing what projects the board must pursue with our next round of energy and that grants application. So this will be part of that discussion.
Okay. Commissioners, I have one question. On the proposals here, how far out are you from applying for the EIAF grant?
The deadline for the next round, I believe, is April 1st. So we'll be submitting the application, I'm going to refresh it. We'll be completing the application and have it in front of the board, probably your last meeting in March, so the board can approve that application because it's a card to be approved by commissioners. And then, and then we're fortunate enough to be awarded. We shouldn't have an award later within a month. So I'm guessing by latter part of April, we'll know. But I don't know when we'll get a contract. We're still waiting on a contract that we received and awarded in the first part of November. Last I heard, we may get the contract ended this month.
Then going out that far, is it going to affect these contract proposals?
It shouldn't because we're to submit a guaranteed maximum price. And I made it clear that we were going to be pursuing grant monies to help pay for this. So I'm guessing if I was a contractor, I'd bump my price a bit. I'd bump my bid a bit with anticipating that materials legalize the price.
And as you were, that some of the contractors who made a contract award, they have the number of weeks that it would take them to do the project. Commissioner Haas? No questions? Well, we have a question in front of us, commissioners. Apparently, we have an EDG at this point in time met. What is the recommendation from our fellow commissioners?
I do have one question. So if we, if we don't get the EIAF grant, then what happens to this project?
We've, it's been budgeted for.
Okay.
The trouble, man.
Right, but if we don't get the funding, we don't have the match.
Yeah, if we don't get the funding, we have $270,000 budgeted in 2025 for this project. We want to go after the funding to pay for half of it in essence. So the county will be on 135,000. But if the project, if the project isn't funded in our next application through EIAF, then we'd end up having to pay for it in-house if the board elects to do it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. As far as budget goes, we have to actually see what we can actually come up with budget. If we don't have the rigor to recover that, then we don't want to actually overspend account most management.
Well, once again, back to the, back to the point. If we don't have any discussion, I will entertain in motion up or down at this time to proceed with Administrator Dornikam's recommendations.
I believe we need to, we need to move forward to plan this down. I'll move to approve 25 F-001 and then it will be awarded to EGD GMP at 179,450. One second. Commissioner Serp?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. 9B, consideration of 25 F-002, Fairgrounds Livestock Pavilion Electrical Upgrade, RFQ slash P. Back to you, sir.
Commissioner, similar to your prior consideration, is consideration of 25 F-002 in RFQ slash P to upgrade our electrical in the livestock pavilion, the 4H bar. Followed results, ESBI, 21,405 dollars, CCE, 28,886 dollars, GCG, 47,250 dollars. Met outside, again, did a site visit, explained to each of the contractors that showed up for the site visit exactly what we wanted to accomplish. And all the bids came in as we had hoped. And so I've asked the board to approve the ESBI, it's been 21,405 dollars. We have budgeted 150,000 for this project, and I developed that from estimate we got. Earlier in the process, it was around 80,000. You can tell that we have a budget to pay for this, and again, this will be another topic of discussion later in your meeting, as to whether I want to pursue this also, along with some other projects that we want to grant this to pay for. And this is also making, we'd be pursuing grant monies, additional funding in the RFQ slash P.
Commissioners, any questions for Administrator Dornkamp?
There are, Mr. Dornkamp, on the, there is a document here on page 212, where we're looking at agricultural buildings. These are your notes.
Commissioner, this was part of CCE's submission, they included this page out of statute?
Okay, thank you.
I should say statute, not some electrical manual of lit?
Very good. What is the timeline to complete this project? Was it based upon the approval of the grant, based upon, and given that amount, has that been, do you have anything either through broad, real general budget for this particular project?
It is budgeted in the general funds budget, I believe, fair enough.
Capital's budget.
Thank you. Capital's budget.
Commissioners, any questions? Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion, either to approve or to deny the item 9B.
I will move to approve ESPI, bid of 21,405, or 25,000, I can expect, to do Fairgrounds Livestock for the electrical upgrade. Second motion.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you, 9C, consideration of 25 ARFQ, Perry Stokes Airport Consulting Services, RFQ. Back to you, sir.
Commissioners, we solicit responses for 25 ARFQ, RFQ for Perry Stokes Airport Consulting Services. Committee put together to interview and listen to presentations from three different companies that submitted their interest. I believe it was the committee's, I believe about it, it was the committee's recommendation that we, that the board award this to Bolton and Mink. When we interviewed them, they came across very well, as did all three consultants, they all three, I believe, were good engineers, can do the engineering portion of our airport work without any hesitation. One thing that Bolton and Mink got leave, brought to Los Angeles County, the others didn't, is the ability to assist us in growing our airport. They have a person on staff who has known airports, worked with known airports before, and of course is in the immemorialary where there are a whole lot more planes, etc. But this individual also thought that they could help us with our military growth, along with our FBOs, so I'd ask the board to approve Bolton and Mink as our consulting firm for, I believe, the next five years is what that timeframe will be. And then whoever the board approves for our consulting services, they will work on a contract. And as a side note, as part of that contract, when we do get the terms and the fees for that contract, then we have to run it through a third party, and in the past, somebody we've used, a company called Loop and Associates, to make sure that any types of fees that consultant will be charging us are comparable to what the FAA allows.
And that's, thank you, kind of took that question off of my highlighted portions here. Are the fees going to be designed based upon the number of aircraft that is landing in the body for our facility, is the size of the airport, the runways? How do they calculate the actual assessment of those fees back to the county?
Good question, and I have an answer for, to look through the FAA's guidelines. But my understanding is that based upon what our capital room plan shows, they develop fees for that, and there may be additional fees, like the work in the last round, when we go outside of that scope of work, when we start doing industrial park type work or other work that's outside of those scopes, then we may end up with an additional fee.
I want to ask a question that's going to be way up there on the left field. Given the response that this particular group of consultants have, what if the fees that come to us are extremely unaffordable? We will have the ability at that point in time not to continue with the, with this consultant company, correct?
That's correct, commissioner, but each of these consultants is aware that whatever fees they're going to charge or want to charge Los Angeles County will have to be approved by the FAA, and you also have to go through, as I said, a third party, we call it an independent party, that independent party makes sure that the fees that are that want to be paying are within range of what the FAA permits.
Because the FAA still is 90% of this, of any kind of grant, I'm saying, that we do within the court. So that's why they probably have to say something to you.
Yes, and that is, that is, thank you so much. The one I know, both of you, I would imagine, both of you sat on the interview committee. And what, what do you see as far as, you know, the growth, I mean, promoting the airport? That's, I mean, we know, we have spoken to that for quite a few years. Specifically, what are some of the, for our constituents out there, what are some of the comments that we can put our hands around? We have an industrial proposal, industrial park proposal there. How would they support the expansion of such?
With industrial park? Selling our airport, the industrial park, to companies who are looking for area with a smaller airport, but with good, with good other transportation services, and with I-25, we've got freight trains and passenger trains coming through our areas. So that, and then also an increase in air traffic, which is going to be a challenge. Our FBO is looking at constructing new hangars out there, especially the latest one, like these pusher floors of 80 by 100 hangar. We'll go to the house, because that was one of my questions, one of our questions for consultants as well. Why would we need an 80 by 100? As I said, typically what happens is, I'm going off in weeds here, there's maneuvers going on out of the Pinewood Canyon, that they'll want to have, especially if there's rotary aircraft, they'll want to have rotary aircraft, at least two of them, one for responding to emergencies, one responding, I think, to fires, but they like to have them housed, so that was one of the reasons why we went after this 80 by 100. And then also, it's a long-range goal, but we'd sure like to put a taxiway in out there. Reason being is our FBO also said that to get jets in to our airport, which is why these pusher trains are also pilots, any pilot, especially jet pilots, don't like coming, turning around at the end of the runway, coming back down the runway. Those jets are way too expensive, if somebody happens to land on the taxiway at the same time, or on runway the same way, same time they catch them back, then it's going to be a disaster. So that's another push, and these folks don't think they can help us, of course, that's going to be seven, eight, nine years out, if you're not for.
Well, I want to thank all of you for going through this selection and for this consultant, and thank you for the work that you put in, and thank you for sharing that documentation with us, commissioners. Any additional discussions?
Well, it's great to see the interest that this generated, and that there are so many qualified candidates that have been willing to look into it for so many years, and they just kind of sit there idle, and I'm pretty excited about seeing this before. With that, I'll make the motion to award the 25 ARFQ, Perry Stokes Airport Consulting Services to Bolton and Mink.
One second.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. We go now to 9A, consideration of retail liquor license renewal application for Crowbar. And one of my first gestures, counsel?
I have a view to add no questions.
Thank you.
For instance.
Thank you.
Commissioners? I've seen the sheriff report. Maybe I might have a whole bunch of calls out there, so. I would move to approve the retail license renewal application for Crowbar.
Second motion. Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Consideration of County Road 69.2, Simpson's Rest closure. This is a request from the city of Trinidad for safety concerns during water tank rehabilitation. Mr. Dornkamp, why don't you give us some details on that?
Commissioners, the city has approached the county with the request to close County Road 69.2 during renovation of their north side tank, they call it, excuse me. Concerns are that with the construction, maybe times when the road is going to be either closed up there where that tank is, or there's going to be real narrow passageways past the construction going on. There's fear that a car could, or a vehicle could inadvertently go off to the, I guess I'll call it, the east side of that Simpson's Rest road. The projected project timeline is from February 24 through May 15.
Thank you, and for information to the public, the city is going to be readying these tanks, some plastic them, recording, painting them, and installing all the proper safety equipment, ladders, vents, etc., etc., so I don't have any additional questions, commissioners. I think for the safety perspective, of which we don't want to have a construction truck going up there meeting with a, one of our citizens in a burning period of accidents, from that perspective, I do support the request. And from the 24th of February, which is this upcoming Monday, basically through May 15. And if there's going to be, my only, as you communicate with the city, if there's going to be any extended days to that closure, please keep communication ongoing with it.
I will let the city then to put a verb on the paper, all small social media, that roads are going to be closed for a time frame. Very well.
And who will turn them back? If there's somebody trying to come up there, they're going to have a gate there? They're going to have, somebody to stop signing?
The plan is just to lock the gate, lock the road closed, sign it. The gate being down the bottom of the paper.
Thank you, I will then entertain a motion.
Having been up there in the spring of the year on that side, still raining, on the shady side of that, it is a hazard, just the way it is, not without truck traffic. So I would move to approve the County Road 69.2 Simpson Rest closure request from the city of Trinidad for safety concerns during the timeframe, February 24 through May 15.
One second.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. 9A, consideration of C-Dot Main Street Grant, PO 411037499. Mr. Dornkamp?
Before you for your consideration, commissioners, C-Dot Main Street Grant, PO 411037499, for 56,788 dollars, this is the project for paving on County Road 83.1, just north of the home school. And with the C-Dot Main Street Grants, the PO processes required, so I'd ask the board to approve this. Do you think our finance director would pursue for your personal, master party number?
Received it.
Well, it's a bad deal. I don't think we have any questions, you know, when the money person says, "We're good," we're good. Thank you, I will entertain a motion. I will move the C-Dot Main Street Grant, PO 411037499.
Second motion. Commissioner has?
Yes.
Commissioner, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. 9A, discussion and consideration of Energy Impact Assistance Funds, Grant Fairgrounds Improvement, March Cycle, back to you, sir, I think this is what you want to make your reference to.
The someone I was making reference to earlier in the meeting, commissioners, is what the boards desire is, I want to pursue this next round, and the board had expressed a desire to go big, I guess is the term, since we're not sure how much longer the energy impact money's going to be available, and if so, at what level. And so we put this chart, lack of better way of describing it, together, where the kitchen and the grandstand. We've got guaranteed maximum price on this also, 470,500 dollars. The trail on the path is the path on the exterior, just beside the exterior wall of the backside, I'll call it, of Fairgrounds, 408,000, I think it's lighting. The gazebo, which is what we just discussed a little earlier, the 4H bar electrical. That was the total construction based upon Art Valley, who we engaged services of to come up with a guaranteed match price on a number of different facility upgrades out at the fairgrounds. Those general conditions for total budget. And we also kicked in sporting fields, which we had discussion off and on, for a FIFA regulation soccer field, RV sites, we talked about that, 15,000 dollars a site, campsites, 8,000 a site. And then maintenance supervisor, also finance director, I wish to clarify about the fact that seems like we have an awful lot of water leaks out there in that fairgrounds. From the PVC pipe that was installed, I'm not sure when that was installed, probably the late 1990s. And so there was an idea kicked around, maybe replace it here with some two-inch poly or three-inch poly. That's a really rough estimate on that poly that it came up with, so it's kind of the board's desire, want you to like us to pursue. So it's kind of the board's desire, want, you'd like us to pursue it, measure around the energy impact grants.
I guess I have a question on the sporting fields. Are we going to build something that's not going to be utilized much, being that the city has parks? I know from, I know from South, like from South Side Park, there, there used programs. I mean, it's been moved down to, I think there's four fields up there. I think last year there was two, I think three, so three baseball, little league baseball teams, and they had to play each other. That's all it was, was three. And I don't, I don't want to build something that's going to just be sitting there.
Yeah, it's kind of, let me, one of the conversations that we've had really on, and we, I had just perhaps one very brief conversation with Trinidad State and the high school. For the soccer programs, I don't think there that they would be incorporated, cooperation. And I think if this was to move forward, that's what, that's what I'm going to comment, to engage the AYSO, the high schools or high school and the college, so they can be participants on a project like this. I totally agree with Commissioner Sera. I don't want us to just put whatever amount of money up there. But since the college, at this point in time, does not have an official soccer field, I think the initial support was yes, we would be very interested in supporting that. And the idea for us was to bring traffic to that part of our community and open up the fairgrounds, so they can actually see what we have out there. And then having the walk-in trails and families begin to use that, that was kind of the intent, historically, I presume, Sir, that if we were going to go through this, we would have to have a cooperation and partnership with the college, with the high school or high schools, and then the AYSO, and then go from there and see where the project would end up. That's, and it would not necessarily be trying to replicate some of the services that the city already has throughout their respects of the city.
And if I may add to the conversation, what we kicked around at the ministry level is perhaps, if the board wants us to pursue the sporting fields and the trail slash path through the Goco Grants, we've been implementing their contracts, contact with south central economic development, this would help us through the process. But yeah, if the board, if the board doesn't believe that soccer field, whether the soccer field is, is relevant or something we should pursue, I don't believe. But I guess too, as people, we hope we'll start utilizing that part, perhaps in addition to the basketball court that was installed recently, that maybe kids can get out there, run around on the soccer field, something, I don't think, Commissioners, it's, it's what you're calling.
So the question on all of these projects is, you want to rank, you want to, what are you looking for? You want us to tell you what we feel like is important?
What I would like you folks to do is to tell us what you want us to pursue through the energy impact grant money sent.
For a total, total dollar amount of?
Plus two, a couple million is what the board had expressed. But again, I, my thoughts are to kick out the sporting fields and kick out the trail, because we go after Goco Grants for those, we're going to have a discussion with SCAD to go after those grant monies for those two projects. And I think finance director Colby told us that those would be eligible for Goco Grants. And then, you know, the kitchen, the gazebo, the electrical on the four-H barn, I think that was a high priority of the board, because during fair time, it's not uncommon for those breakers to, electrical breakers to kick off, because they're overloaded. And then RV sites, campsites, replacing the pipe or whatever.
I'm all about infrastructure, and I like the idea of fixing the leaks and getting all the done. That four-H barn, the electrical system from way back when my kids were in four-H has been a problem and a safety hazard. I think, you know, that's got to be right up there ranking towards the top. The rest of that, we got to get ADA compliant with billing, and I mean, that's pretty much a mandate. The rest of it, can wait.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the way you broke up this particular project, I think it makes sense. All the way from where you bought the kitchen grandstand, all the way down to the, your total budget of one and a half million dollars. I think that's, that's something that we probably move forward. And then later on, consider that would be phase two for the recreation and outdoor accessibility.
Okay, so we'll pursue the poly pipe, the kitchen grandstand, the gazebo, and the electrical leverage.
Yes, sir.
Everything else on hold?
Okay.
And then Goco Grants, we'll obviously bring it back to you folks for approval, but then we'll look at continuing to pursue the sporting fields and the path and trail to Goco.
There was a conversation that was had, was there, with Goco a while back? And I think the mapping and planning of these outdoors facilities was presented, and I'm not sure, I can't remember what the recommendation was, but it was Goco or somebody else. Nonetheless, I don't want us to go back, I don't want to digress. The plan that you have here makes sense, and I agree with my fellow Commissioners. Let's move on to phase, and that's going to be phase two or three down the road.
Okay.
Commissioners, if there is no additional discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the IAF Grant Fairgrounds Improvement, March Cycle, with those items identified.
One second.
Commissioner Sera?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Thank you. Discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty-five zero-one-five, appointing a representative of the San Francisco County to the South Central Council of Government, the Executive Board.
Mr. Dornkamp?
For your consideration is, is mission twenty-five dash zero-fifteen, Commissioners, and it has historically been an annual appointment, and we're asking the board maybe to consider that appointment, either two, three, four, or five-year appointment, so we can watch it in full PI. So we're not having to revisit this every year. So the language isn't set yet, we're asking the board to set that language as far as the timeframe that you want this appointment to represent our San Francisco County in the public.
As we set the language, also, one of the recommendations I wanted to make is to have a proxy in there. So the appointee would be A and the proxy would be, and on that particular one, I would step back and ask my fellow Commissioners on that proxy, because there's going to be times that the appointee might not be available. And Mr. Commissioner Sera has been, we have an opening meeting this Friday, so I'll be there, but I think, thank you, Commissioner Hess, I will be with that.
Mr. Sera's party?
Yes. Now, let me put it back to you. I was, I was referring to the language that we were speaking of.
I don't see an issue between the products, so I think you have to.
Okay, very good. Thank you, counsel. I appreciate that.
I think a four-year time period, timeframe would be good, because we've got two Commissioners that were just recently elected that can do that four-year time period, where I'm terminated in memory, so.
And if you approve that, would you please table the resolution itself? And you bring it back at your next meeting, address the proxy first, Captain Junior, and then.
There it is. Mr. Dornkamp, you have some homework to, to do, sir, and I retract my comments.
Yes.
Now, move to table, that's, this I'm, the second motion for cover.
Commissioner Sera?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. So that item has been tabled.
Nine K, consideration of Colorado State University Board of Governors' Extension MOU. Mr. Dornkamp?
Mission for you, for your consideration is MOU with Colorado State University Extension.
Counsel, there were some blank items on the last one, I've got an opportunity to read it, and I think you have any concerns.
I don't see a blank for this version. I don't see, I certainly lose faith as a client.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion on this item?
Tabled last time?
Yes.
You want to, then you can back it, and you don't want to.
Commissioners, thank you, counsel. I think what we need to do.
And I goofed up on that, because I didn't realize it's in the table. I thought it was completely dismissed.
No, because we had, we had some information that was not completely filled in there.
Two meetings, two meetings turned.
Yes, very good. So let me retract the comments, and at this time, my consideration of Colorado State University Board of Governors' Extension MOU was laid on the table a couple meetings back, or at least at the very last meeting. So at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to be moved from the table.
So moved. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Sera?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
So now, having received a kind of a, a kind of a contract from counsel, Commissioners, any discussion on this MOU?
Now, in this MOU, we have Kim Peters listed, and we have Bruce Brickensher listed. Bruce will be retiring, retiring, and Kim will be resigning soon. Does that?
They're still there. They can ask for them in.
I will approve the Colorado State University Board of Governors' Extension MOU.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Sera?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. The finance portion of the meeting for national matters, consideration of payroll and bills for the first half of February two thousand twenty-five. Good morning, finance director.
Good morning. Payroll as of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five is two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three and forty-five cents. Do you have any questions on payroll? Two voices paid on February sixth. It's one hundred and forty-three thousand, which is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand and thirty-five cents. Sorry. My cheater's played out. Let's see, in this packet I flagged, let's see, a color division of fire prevention. This here is, like, we give two hundred dollars to the local volunteer firefighters. This is an annual thing that we do. We give every, a thousand dollars to them, and they disperse, I think, for equipment for the firefighters. Last time I had a check that I said that was going to Boyd, the one to Robert Shannon for royalties for seventeen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two. That was the correct amount. And I think that's all I have. If I have any, if I have anything, please.
No, thank you. And you know, I, I wanted for the public, for transparency, on the royalties, can you, either you or Mr. Dornkamp, this is the extraction of gravel from someone's gravel pit, correct?
That's correct. Also, any other type of material we remove from their pit.
Thank you. Yeah, I received the question, and I'd rather put it out there simply, you know, wondering, why are, why are we paying royalties? That's exactly what that is, is the county benefits, our constituents get the gravel, the material, and so we have a longstanding agreement with this landlord.
And our, and our current royalty is fifty cents a ton, which is low standard, but that's for.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate that. Finance director Colby, anything else?
Nothing else.
Commissioners, any questions? Here we are. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve payroll and bills for the first half of February two thousand twenty-five.
And I just want to comment that Commissioner Lopez, he has a word sense of humor for the things that's his fun. But I'll serve the motion.
Commissioner Sera?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, sir. We don't have any items for executive session, and having no other items on this particular agenda, wow, this has to be a record. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this board of county commissioners.
So moved.
Commissioner Sera?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you, and we'll see you here at one.